To be able to do something as significant as conducting business for the citizens of Oceanside. Father, I lift up before you each and every member that's here tonight, both members at the diocese and members within the audience, that the concern would be to do what is right for the citizens of Oceanside and what is beneficial for this city. Father, I lift up before you tonight Brad Hunter, Oceanside Police Officer who was struck down two days ago. Brad's doing well and I pray for your continued hand of healing, on him and restoration. Father, I pray for first responders in our city, fire and police, for city workers who go out and put themselves in the way of harm, that the citizens of this city may have better lives. Protect them, hold them in your arms and keep them safe. Father, I pray for the business center tonight to be done peacefully, to be done in tranquility, and your will would be accomplished when we pray these things. Jesus name. Amen.
Please place your hand over your heart and face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. Next, we have a proclamation for National Parks and Recreation Month. Eileen Turk, Division Manager for Parks and Recreation, please come forward.
Proclamation in honor of National Parks and Recreation Month, July 2017. Whereas parks make life better for all ages in Oceanside, and whereas parks, greenways, and open spaces provide a welcome respite from our fast-paced, high-tech lifestyles while protecting and preserving our natural and cultural resources, and whereas parks and recreation fosters human development and promotes health and wellness for all ages in the community, and whereas parks and recreation services support economic development through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction, and whereas parks and recreation strengthens the community's image and sense of place and increases cultural unity, and whereas parks and recreation facilities, community problem solving, strengthens safety and security and reduces juvenile crime, and whereas there are thousands of California children, adults, and seniors who benefit from a wide range of services, facilities, and programs provided by the City of Oceanside's Parks and Recreation Division. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Chuck Lowry, Deputy Mayor of the City of Oceanside, California, do hereby proclaim July 2017 as National Parks and Recreation Month in Oceanside. Furthermore, I urge all residents to celebrate by participating in their choice of pleasurable activities offered by the Oceanside Parks and Recreation Division to enhance their social, physical, and mental well-being. Issued this 21st day of June 2017.
Thank you. I would just like to take a moment to introduce two of our Park and Recreation Commissioners, Tom Frankham, our President, our Chairperson of Oceanside Parks and Recreation Commission, and Mark Donner. And please check out the website, oceansiderec.com. We have a ton of fun events going on this summer, and don't forget July is Parks and Recreation Month. Have fun. Thank you, Chuck.
I believe we only have one that was able to be here tonight, and if I could ask Russ Cunningham, City of Oceanside Principal Planner, and Venus Johnson, third-place winner from Oceanside High School, to please come forward.
On April 20th, Onward Oceanside hosted a high school speech contest that asked students from Oceanside High School and El Camino High School to consider what a sustainable Oceanside might look like in 2030. Four students delivered energetic and informative presentations that touched on environmental stewardship, housing, workforce training, mobility, community values, and other topics. Judges from the Planning Division and the Water Utilities Department awarded first place to Oceanside High School Junior Gavin Jockhurst, second place to Oceanside High School Senior Robert Marcial, and third place to both Carmen Gonzalez, El Camino High School, and Venus Johnson, Oceanside High School. The Onward Oceanside team hopes that these amazing young people will remain involved in the general plan update and encourage other members of the youth community to participate actively in the project.
Do I speak?
Sure.
Hello, everyone. I just want to thank Russ Cunningham and everyone else on board for Onward Oceanside for giving me this wonderful opportunity and highlighting and magnifying young people who are ready to make a change in Oceanside. So, thank you, guys.
I do want to acknowledge you for being a pirate.
Next, we have a presentation for North Coast Church Day of Service Recognition. With the following members of North Coast Church, please come forward. Are they all here, Eileen?
Okay, so we have Brian Woodward, Steve Dircing, Kelsey Sass, Emerson Grimsby, Ken Kaisel, and Mark Patnod.
Heard that you sing really well.
On April 29th and 30th of this year, parishioners from North Coast Church selflessly volunteered their time and completed several projects for the tri-city community. Included in the projects were replacing subflooring at Heritage Park, interior painting of the Country Club Senior Center, repairing restrooms, painting, window repair, and landscaping at Crown Heights Resource Center, and painting, power washing, and cleaning carpets at Libby Lake Community Center. Two thousand two hundred and sixty-six four-hour volunteer shifts and nine thousand sixty-four services hours were completed by these amazing individuals. Please join me in expressing gratitude.
I can tell you that if you all get tired of enjoying the award, you can give me a call, because this is the kind of work that the neighborhood, all the neighborhoods need, and we really appreciate the efforts you've done. So, thank you, congratulations. Yeah, and she wants to take a picture, and the fire chief wants to take a picture. We should move together a little bit more, otherwise our feet would be in the picture.
Thank you. The City Council met in closed session to discuss the status of labor negotiations with the Oceanside City Employees Association and the Oceanside Police Officers Association Nonsworn, and there is no reportable action on that matter.
Thank you. Thank you. And then consent calendar, anything?
Item 32 has been removed by staff, so you'll be voting on items three through 31 to balance.
Move approval of the balance.
Second. Okay, any discussion? Please vote. Item number 33. Ask the clerk to introduce the item.
Oh, yes, excuse me. Item 33, City Council, approval of a professional services agreement in an amount not to exceed $2,988,624 with Infrastructure Engineering Corporation of Oceanside for a condition assessment and access improvements for the Mesa Garrison Gravity Line, Mission Avenue Lift Station Force Main, the land outfall, and the Buena Vista Force Main Gravity Line, and authorization for the city manager to execute the agreement.
Welcome.
Thank you for having me. I hope this comes up here. I have it up on the computer.
One second. There we go.
There we go. Okay, great. Well, good evening, Honorable Deputy Mayor, Council Members. I'm Greg Kepler with the City of Oceanside Water Utilities Department, and we have for your consideration this evening the item to approve a professional services agreement with IEC for the condition assessment of three of the city's large diameter pipelines. They include the Mesa Garrison 24-inch gravity line, the 24-inch land outfall pipeline, as well as our 42-inch Buena Vista Force Main gravity line. To give you a little bit of background on this project, the city maintains a system of large diameter pipelines which collect wastewater from throughout the city. These pipelines convey the wastewater to both our La Salina wastewater treatment plant, as well as our San Luis Rey wastewater treatment plant or reclamation facility, and the water's treated and disinfected. And in the case of our San Luis Rey water reclamation facility, that water is conveyed back down through our land outfall, where the flows are combined at La Salina and they're discharged to the ocean through our ocean outfall. So, recently, we've encountered some spills, and we've had a failure of one of our pipelines, and this is due to both age as well as external conditions on the pipeline, and there's an urgent need for us to do some access improvements on these pipelines, as well as have them assessed for condition, and making long-term programmatic improvements for these pipelines. So, this slide shows you kind of the overview of the project area. There's a, it's kind of hard to see, but there's an area that's bounded by a dashed red line, and it's shaded in blue. There's a section that kind of follows a north-south direction, and that contains the three pipelines that we'll be studying as part of this project. It includes all three that I've mentioned, and then there's the portion of the project that kind of runs from a northeast to a southwest direction towards our La Salina wastewater treatment plant, and that section contains the land outfall by itself. So, it's normal during the collection and treatment of wastewater for chemical and biological reactions to occur during that process. One of the byproducts of that process is the production of sulfide gas. Sulfide gas is very corrosive to both metallic and concrete pipes. This image here highlights that happening. This is our Mesa Garrison 24-inch line. What tends to happen is, it's actually the portion that is not in contact with the water, it's the gas that gets trapped in the upper portion of the pipe causing the corrosion. And in the case of the Mesa Garrison line, you might recall we had a failure of that line about two years ago where we had to declare an emergency and repair that pipeline, and this is the result of corrosion due to hydrogen sulfide gas. In addition, the soil conditions can also affect the performance of the pipeline. And so with that, knowing that there's an urgent need to have these pipelines assessed for condition, we issued an RFP. The RFP was issued to 11 consulting firms and all the Oceanside firms. Their scope of work contains requirements that they perform the condition assessment and includes basically providing new access points into these pipelines so we can launch technology to assess the condition. Some of those pipelines will actually measure the remaining pipe wall thickness in the pipe. It's able to detect leaks in the pipe. Some of the other things they're going to be required to do are, bear with me here, let's see. They're also going to clean the pipes. Once they have access to the pipes, they're going to launch closed-circuit television so they can do visual inspections of the pipes, and part of their scope of work includes making minor and moderate repairs as they come across them. So, if they detect leaks and that sort of thing, they'll be able to make those repairs. And with that, on April 27th, we received two proposals for the scope of work, and staff reviewed those proposals, and we found that IEC had addressed all of the requirements that were requested in the RFP and was highly qualified to perform this work. I do want to touch briefly on the environmental requirements for this project. This project is exempted from CEQA in that it is essentially at this point performing a study to collect data, and if we do encounter any types of repairs that are needed, they fall under the exemption that allows us to do maintenance and repairs on those pipelines. In terms of the fiscal impact, this project has $3.8 million in the budget. Therefore, there are sufficient funds to fund this project for $2.988,624 million, and the funding for this comes from our sewer flow and service charges in our sewer fixed asset replacement fund. And so with that, our recommendation is to award this professional services agreement to IEC in an amount of $2,988,624 for the condition assessment of our three very important pipelines. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions you might have.
Very good. Thank you. Just have a seat at the sidebar. Councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you. Well, this is very critical work that needs to be done, so I'm going to go ahead and move approval. Thank you.
Is it public on this?
No, public.
Okay. I'm going to second, but I do have a couple of questions.
Please.
Am I up next, or is...
You are.
Okay, thanks. I remember last year in this thing, kind of, we started on this, and then we couldn't find a good piece of pipe to connect on to, and it kept running up the hill. Are we looking at that again? That this is bigger than we were initially thinking?
That is a possible outcome, definitely. We don't know, and that's the reason why we need to get in there and do this work, but that is a possible outcome. We think when we had the Mesa Garrison failure that we addressed all the immediate issues. We weren't able to do the work that we really needed to do to inspect the remainder of the pipeline, and that's the reason why we're doing this project now.
Okay, and then where's this in relationship to those two, those new homes going up on Mesa? Those are Mesa just to the west...
To the west, correct.
Of Fusat, right?
West, yeah, it's west of El Camino Real.
East of Fusat.
Fusat, west of El Camino Real. So, the main corridor that we're going to be studying, it generally follows, if you're familiar with the SD genie overhead power lines, our easement essentially follows that SD genie easement. So, most of the work will be contained within that easement, with the exception of the land outfall. A portion of that will be assessed for condition in Oceanside Boulevard, all the way down to the La Salina wastewater treatment plant.
And then how much is going to be in the roadway? How much is traffic going to be disrupted?
Probably 80% will not be in the travel right away. It'll be within the easement.
Okay, okay, thank you. Did I second that already?
No, you did.
Okay, yeah, we're good to go.
Okay. Jack?
Yep.
Please vote.
Motion passes 4-0.
Okay, the next item is the Jones Road Sewer Pipeline Project.
Yes. City Council, authorization to award a contract in an amount not to exceed $1,034,224 to Shilling Paradise Corporation of El Cajon for construction of the Jones Road Sewer Project. Approval of professional services agreement in an amount not to exceed $15,898 for engineering support services during construction of the project, and authorization for the city manager to execute the agreements upon receipt of all supporting documents.
Welcome.
Good evening, thank you. Good evening, Deputy Lowry and councilmembers. My name is Chanel Morales, and I'm a Senior Civil Engineer in the Water Utilities Department. This evening, I'm going to be talking to you about consideration of the award of the contract in the amount of $1,034,024 to Shilling Paradise Corporation for the construction of the Jones Road Sewer Pipeline Project. In addition, approve a professional services agreement to Infrastructure Engineering in the amount of $15,898, which they will provide engineering support services during the construction of this project. There's currently an existing 10-inch sewer line that receives flow from the local nearby businesses, including Hydronautics, Sabra, and TE Connectivity. In order to reduce the risk of spills through the existing 10-inch sewer line, Hydronautics is currently limited to discharging up to 500,000 gallons per day. They are considering doubling that discharge, which is why we need to be able to provide the sewer system for them to be able to discharge and increase that capacity. All these users have paid capacity fees to reflect the current and planned manufacturing discharges. However, like I said before, the current sewer is not large enough to handle those Here is a map showing you the location of where the sewer pipeline will be located. It's all along Jones Road between Villa Del Monte and will lead into the Roymar Lift Station. It's approximately 1,200 linear feet of 15-inch PVC sewer pipeline, and will include about nine manholes as well. On March 15th, 2017, the City Council approved the plans and specifications to call to bids for this project. On May 23rd, the city received four bids and were publicly opened. Staff reviewed and evaluated those bids with the apparent low bidder of Shilling Paradise in the amount of $1,034,224. Additionally, IEC is the engineer of record on the project and will provide engineering support services throughout construction. The engineering support services include the contractor's seminal reviews to ensure construction materials meet the plans and specifications. They will review requests for information from the contractor and provide feedback, as well as site visits and progress meetings, and will provide the record drawings at the The 1617 budget for the sewer line project is $1,189,000. So, with the construction costs as well as the engineering support services, that amount is $1,050,122. Therefore, sufficient funds are available. The funding sources for this project are the sewer flow and service charges in the sewer fixed asset replacement fund. With that said, staff recommends award of the contract amount of $1,034,224 to Shilling Paradise Corporation for the Jones Road Sewer Pipeline Project, and approve the professional services agreement with Infrastructure Engineering in the amount of $15,898 for construction support services. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Very good. Thank you. Just have a seat over at the sidebar there, and we have a few questions.
Will we be public?
No, public.
Okay.
Quiet day.
Who's up first?
Councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you. So, in part, the basis for this change is because of the, because Hydronautics is contemplating the expansion, correct? Okay. And so, this is really being, the funds that are being used are funds that have already been paid in by these companies. It's not, for example, it's not being subsidized by ratepayers. Is that correct?
Councilmember Sanchez, Honorable Deputy Mayor, and Councilmember Cary Dale, Water Utilities Director. The funds come from ratepayer contributions. However, all of the companies that contribute to this line have already paid capacity fees...
Right.
...which would pay for the expansion. So, it's a combination of those two funding sources.
A combination, but really, this is being paid by these companies. It's not really being subsidized by, say, ratepayers, right? They have already paid it, and in effect, the funds have been there. Is that right?
They have paid into the system...
Right.
...to use pipe of a certain size. That pipe is not of that size, and so the ratepayers that have paid in to improve the system and continue to rejuvenate and renew the system are contributing portions of those funds to pay for the project.
Okay, so what you're saying is that the ratepayers are contributing basically a percentage of what the ratepayers would be benefiting from?
Yes.
Okay. I don't want the ratepayers to think that they're subsidizing a private use.
I think what you can look at this as is that all ratepayers, whether they're commercial, industrial, or residential, pay into funds that fund all sorts of infrastructure improvements, including those in the downtown area, which are primarily serving residential areas. This one happens to be in a commercial-industrial area.
Great. But you can basically say, make the statement that it's not the ratepayers, the residential ratepayers, that are subsidizing, say, commercial use. You can make that statement.
We can say that all ratepayers are paying their fair share for use of the system.
All right. All right, then I'm going to go ahead and move approval.
I'll second. Am I up next, or Jack?
Councilmember Feller.
My question is around IEC. In the prior item, we didn't have their fee broken out. In this one, we did. What is, I can't find it in my backup either, so do you know that...
The...
What it is?
Council...
I mean, I know it's the other item, but you're...
It's the contract amount. Correct me if I'm wrong, Greg, but it's the contract amount going to IEC for the previous one.
Is IEC the whole contract for 2,800 or 22.8 million?
Councilmember Feller, Honorable Deputy Mayor, Councilmembers. So, IEC's contract for the previous item, they are the lead contractor, you could say, on that project. They actually have a subcontractor that will be doing a significant portion of the construction work for that project.
Okay, I got it. Thank you.
Councilmember Kern.
Thank you. I noticed it's kind of an odd size, 15-inch PVC. So, I haven't heard of that size. Usually, they're like 12-inch, or 18-inch, or 24-inch. So, 15-inch is an odd size. or twenty-four-inch. So fifteen-inch is an odd size. But I guess the real question is, as we project the growth over there with other industrial uses, why aren't we kind of contemplating like an eighteen-inch or twenty-four-inch? Once we got it dug up the big ditch and we're putting in pipe, why don't we put in a bigger pipe, instead of coming back to futures councils eight years from now and say, oh, we've got to take the fifteen-inch out and put in a twenty-four? So.
Thank you Councilmember Kern and Deputy Honor Mayor Lowry. That's a very good question, and we have sized, the fifteen inches sized for approximately one point five million gallons per day, which is larger than what Hydronautics is planning to discharge. At the same time, while opening up and adding this new water line for Hydronautics, it opens up the capacity in the existing ten-inch line for the businesses currently discharging into that line. If we upsize it to a higher value, we have the issue of lower velocities going through the sewer line, which causes problems down the road as well.
Okay, so it was an engineering answer, so, which went right over my head. Okay, so, but thank you. Did, did, is there, Councilmember Sanchez made a motion, did somebody, did-
There was a second.
Did I second it? Oh, okay.
You don't remember?
I don't, I don't remember.
Okay. Well, please vote.
Passes four zero.
Okay, before we go to the next item, I have a request that people, please turn your cellphones off. We've had two of them in the last twenty-five minutes. If you want to keep your cellphones on, you can use the lobby area, and there's a place to sit out there if you're expecting an urgent call, or you can just use your texting option. Next item is item thirty-five. No, it's a public hearing item, sorry. Forty-one, second reading of ordinance, thank you.
Item forty-one is the adoption of an ordinance of the City of Oceanside amending Chapter Twenty, Sections Twenty point eleven and Twenty point twelve of the Oceanside City Code relating to loitering on public ways, loitering for drug activities, and loitering inside or within fifteen feet of public restrooms.
Move adoption.
Second.
Any public?
No public.
Councilmember Sanchez, we're just voting. Okay, go ahead and vote. Here we go. Thank you. Next.
Passes four zero.
Public comment? Off agenda.
Off agenda item? Okay, we have five.
Five.
Yes.
Are we going to take public comment right now? These are items that are not on the agenda, and if people arrive later, we will do it again later. But right now, we've got twenty-five minutes open for public comment, and he will call the people who are in the order that he's put together.
Okay, there's five, so I'll call all five. Adrienne Hakes, Joe Hill, Josh Brock, Luis Valdivia, and Brenda Batali.
Good evening Deputy Mayor Lowry and councilmembers. I'm Adrienne Hakes. I am currently the Secretary for the Oceanside Public Library, and I am here to thank the council for the support of the library and the new additions to our budget this year, and to let you know that our summer reading program is off and running. We have a thousand children in our community that are participating, including some adults, although I haven't signed up yet, I've been busy moving. Families are invited to the Mission Branch this Saturday for a two PM program called Artie Looney Magic Show, and we are having a number of programs throughout the month and the rest of the summer, and urge you all to check in and see what your public library is offering for you and your family at www.oceansidepubliclibrary.org. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Mr. Joe Hill?
Good evening Deputy Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Joe Hill. I've lived in Oceanside for eighteen years, and I love my city, and I'd like to make a passionate plea on the part of the citizens, and hopefully everyone in this room, and everyone I know, that the city council and the deputy mayor and the mayor would publicly and politically denounce and condemn the episode that's about to occur after the first of the year at San Onofre, where they're going to bury nuclear waste in the ground two hundred feet from the beach. I think it behooves us, citizens of Oceanside, since we're the next city down from San Onofre, that if something ever happens, we have a real problem, and I think it's our civic duty and we're counting on the city council representing the City of Oceanside to at least talk about this, get in touch with whatever method that you guys use to talk to the supervisors, the county supervisors, our elected officials in Washington, the governor, the national, the Nuclear Regulation, Nuclear Regulatory Commission, and Southern California Edison, and the Coastal Commission. No one seems to care about what the citizens are thinking, and information about this is very, very minimal, as far as the public understanding what the consequences would be if something happened at San Onofre, and it could happen at any time. We've seen other nuclear plants have issues, and we're hoping it will never happen here. Thank you for your help.
Thank you.
Well, Deputy Mayor, I just wanted to say, I'm on the community engagement panel for the decommissioning of San Onofre, so probably what I will do, because Mr. Hill's questions comes up not only publicly but privately, so probably sometime this fall, I will have a representative from Southern California Edison come down and update everybody on what's happening at San Onofre. So, but in the meantime, if you want to contact me, I'll be glad to sit down and talk to you about what's happening, because I'm on the panel for the decommissioning.
Yeah.
Well, just come and talk.
Yeah. Thank you.
Mr. Josh Brock?
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening Deputy Mayor and City Council. My name is Josh Brock. I'm the Director of Market Development for Renovate America. We operate the HERO Pace Program, and I'm here tonight just to give you a quick update on what the program has been doing in your community, as well as some changes we've been making to the program since we launched in your city a couple of years ago. I also believe that Clark was kind enough to distribute just a small packet of information, which highlights some of the information- there we go- that I'll be talking about today. Pardon me? With that, just some updates on what we've been doing in your community since launching. We've helped over eight hundred and thirty homeowners make improvements to their property to the tune of over twenty million dollars. Those improvements have helped create over thirty-five million dollars in local economic development, as well as helped create or retain over one hundred and thirty jobs, pardon me, one hundred and seventy jobs in the community. And just to translate that to specific impacts, those installations have created more than a megawatt of local distributed solar across your community, as well as save over one hundred million kilowatt hours of energy, and reduced twenty-eight thousand tons of carbon dioxide through those improvements. And just a quick touch on some changes we've been making to the program, as well as some state-level statutory changes. Last year, we worked with the California Association of Realtors and other groups to pass Assembly Bill twenty-six ninety-three, which put mortgage level disclosures into the PACE statute, requiring all PACE providers to provide a significant level of disclosure and additional consumer protections to everyone who uses the program. We're also working this year to pass additional legislation that'll make further changes to the PACE statute to increase consumer protections and disclosures in the program. Now, I just wanted to take a moment to talk about a couple of things we've been doing too, in particular, that I think would be of interest to you. One of them is we've recently implemented a new contractor quality rating system. As you may know, contractors are the primary vehicle to which consumers become aware of the HERO program. To that end, we've been using a statistical-based method. If you've ever seen the movie Moneyball, that's a good analogy. We're using project data, as well as complaint data, to evaluate the performance of contractors in the program. It allows us to promote and highlight good performing contractors, that are doing right by their constituents, as well as find contractors that are underperforming or not living up to the standard of our program. We work with those contractors to either help them improve, and if they are unable to do so, we suspend or terminate them from the program, and we've done so with over eighty contractors and over a hundred individuals in the program. This new quality rating system builds on our years of working to improve the home improvement marketplace, and no other form of financing offers any protections like this. And finally, with these last twenty seconds, I just wanted to highlight one last change. We are now implementing a system where everyone who comes through to use our financing, before they sign any documents, they get a live recorded call from us. It helps them make sure that they understand the terms of the financing, how the financing works, how it's paid back, as well as an active understanding of what the project is, so that we know that there is a hundred percent transparency. Thank you for your time today, and I appreciate it.
So, Mr. Brock, I have a question. If you would, first of all, pull the microphone back up there, because this is being broadcast on television in addition to us in the room.
You got it.
So, would you just state in like sixty seconds what the program really does?
Yes, my pleasure. So the HERO program is a form of finance that allows property owners to make energy and water-saving improvements on their property, and they pay it back through their property taxes, would be the quicker.
So you're financing property improvements that will benefit the people who live in the home, and it goes onto their property tax, instead of having to get a loan on it? Essentially, they can have it rounded into what they've already got going on with their property?
Correct, yes sir.
So how do people contact you? Through the city, or?
There's a number of ways. We have a website where people can actively contact us if they have questions about the program, or want to understand more about how to improve their property, whether it's residential or commercial.
RenovateAmerica.com?
Yes, sir, RenovateAmerica.com. I will say the most common activity is that most of us have a contractor that we trust and we use, and often it's that individual who says, here's what you'd like to do to your property, here's how much it costs, how would you like to pay for that? And they'll take, and we're just one form that they may offer to that consumer.
That's great. Thank you very much for explaining that.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
We have Mr. Luis Valdivia.
Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Luis Valdivia, and I'm the multicultural marketing specialist at the Delmar Fairgrounds, and I'm here to invite the City of Oceanside to the San Diego County Fair. We are actually halfway into our season. Today marks the start of our second half, and we are very happy, very excited. It's gone very well. We would like to, I would just like to share with you a couple of the things that we have going on. Of course, it's a San Diego tradition, San Diego institution. We are very proud of our multicultural festivals that we have during the fair. We had a very successful Asian festival on the first weekend. We had Adat the Fair, which is a celebration of the LGBTQ community on the second weekend. Of course, we have our annual Gospel Festival, which would take place this Saturday. We have our Hispanic Day every Sunday with Mexican and Hispanic entertainment, and of course, we are very well-known for our unique food. We have a number of offerings, but my favorites this year have to do with bacon. So we have bacon-covered asparagus, bacon-covered Brussels sprouts, bacon-covered cactus, and I just tell my friends, if you don't watch out, you will be bacon-covered as well. So rides, food, fun for the entire family. Of course, our theme this year is Where the West is Fun, which is why I'm wearing this funny hat. We will be open every day except for next Tuesday until July fourth. Great place to watch the fireworks, of course, and for more information, our website is sdfair.com, and if there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other than the fact I had the bacon-wrapped asparagus today at the luncheon for the Twenty Second Air Cultural District, it was really good.
It is delicious, very healthy too. Thank you.
I already ordered a couple of them, yeah. Yeah, I'm on my way.
Ms. Brenda Batali?
My name is Brenda Batali, and I live at Oceanside Terrace's, three zero one Mission Avenue. I'm here to talk about the skateboard ordinance that you people were wise enough and thoughtful, forward-thinking enough to enact several years ago, but the problem is it's not being enforced. We have, we live kitty-corner from the Peerview North-South program that's going on. There is only one sidewalk on that, on our side of the street, that people going from the parking garage to the businesses, to the theater, to the library, every place, are using that sidewalk, as well as many, many skateboarders coming from the transit center. It's become very dangerous for the skateboarders, as well as for, we have elder citizens, we have people with strollers, we have people with dogs on leashes. It's quite a challenge, and I think it's for the skateboarders, it's a challenge, because they like to try to weave in and out, but someone is going to get seriously hurt, a broken hip, a child hit on the sidewalk and get a concussion. It's a serious thing. What I'm proposing is that we have a skateboard ban. It could be expanded, but at least from Cleveland to Detmar and from Seagate to Peerview. That's the area where most of our major business and dining facilities are, and have that be a skateboard-free area. I sent all of the board members about a week ago, a copy of a signed letter from our residential members at our building, and also the commercial people. We have retail and office ones. And to let you know that what other cities are doing, and basically from east to west, other cities have been forward-thinking enough to enact and enforce theirs. In fact, the city of Laguna Beach, three years ago, started giving citations. The first year, they gave a hundred and twenty-two citations. The second year, I think it was sixty-five, and the third year, it was twenty-two citations. So it does work. If we ask them not to skateboard, they learn. I also sent a picture of a kind of a parking area that you can, that we could purchase in a couple of places, that you could store your, they bring their own lock, they score their, store their skateboard there, and then they could enjoy without the skateboard to carry. So anyway, between Everett, Kirkland, Auburn, Washington, the state of Washington, and Florida cities such as Orlando, Kismat, Tampa, and many, many cities in between have a prohibition of skateboarders in the commercial part of the city. So I'm asking that you enforce it. I have called the police, and they say they're not doing it unless, because the city's not asking them to enforce it. But it's posted all over on signs. I think it's Municipal Ordinance one twenty-four, if I remember. So, anyway, thank you.
If I might, I'm not trying to comment here, but I think, I spend enough time on these streets, and just on Monday night, a gal was skating on the strand, a pretty wide-open street, and I tried to cross, and when I tried to cross, she, I know she just skinned every part of her body up as she laid down. It's just, we have to do something, because they are skating everywhere downtown, and it's not just, it's not fair to the businesses, the people coming in and out of the businesses. So I know we have the rule in place, and, you know, I think it's really time to try to-
Last year, the fire department was called out because of a person who hit their head and fell into the street, and-
Yeah, I'm just, I'm, all I'm doing is trying to tell the council that maybe we can think about how to make this work.
I appreciate it.
I'm, I'm really indifferent. I've become indifferent on skateboards, so over the years, I thought they were a great thing, but not so sure.
Thank you. Thanks for bringing that in.
Thank you.
Patty Allen, if you want to step up to the lectern?
Good evening, councilpeople and everybody attending. My name is Patty Allen. I'm pretty nervous right now, but I am, I am a senior citizen. I am here to try, I have a complaint about the Section Eight Department in Oceanside. I've been here for about eight years. I was on, I applied for Section Eight when I was in San Diego about ten years ago, or eight years ago, I'm not quite sure, but anyway. My Section Eight came up last year, and I applied, you know, I went to the meeting and everything, and right- and right, just, just like two weeks before, I got the letter from the Section 8 Department in San Diego. I got a job, a little part-time job, at a tax company in Carlsbad. I've since been laid off. I was laid off April 20th of this year, but my, they told me that I made too much money, I made too much money to qualify for Section 8, and that's not true. That's not true. To qualify for Section 8, your annual income has to be $29,750 or less. In 2016, I only made $24,862, and then I worked until April of 2017, and between January 1 and April 20th, I made $3,008.90. My complaint is the way, the way that Section 8 qualifies people. I am a senior citizen. I am 64 years old. I am on total disability. My monthly income is $1,533 per month, and I have to live on that. I live by myself. I have no husband, no ex-husband, no children, anybody to help me with anything. And my rent is, right now, it's $1,050, and then I have, you know, I have telephone, SDGNE, Cox Communication, and a car payment on top of all that.
So, we're going to give you a phone number of our Director of Housing Services, and that's where that goes. We can't talk about the item, because it's not on our agenda, but...
It's, I emailed everybody. It should be on your agenda.
We don't have, the agenda items are posted three weeks in advance of the actual final draft of the agenda.
So, should I come back again? Because...
We will have this director get ahold of you, or you can call her.
Excuse me?
We're giving you the phone number.
Ma'am, Section 8, Section 8 is federal, federal law, and you are going to be get, you are going to be given the name of our housing director, and...
I've already talked to that housing director. The way, the way that they are qualifying people is not correct.
Excuse me, Ms. Allen, you've had three minutes to present your case, and that's what you're allowed to present.
I need more than three minutes, sir.
Well, then, you're going to have to schedule an agenda item for the future, and speak to the housing director.
So, what I've done today is not doing any good.
Our standard policy is to allow three minutes to speak on, on the item and present your case for a non-scheduled off-agenda item.
Actually, the members of the public can't schedule an item on the agenda. They cannot. They, they can speak on items not on the agenda, but they can't actually add something to the agenda, other than an announcement on items not on the agenda.
Okay, I spoke to a gentleman named Tony yesterday. He told me I could be on the agenda.
Deputy Mayor, members of the council, the deputy city manager and I will get with the speaker at our break here before we start the 6 o'clock meeting and explain our procedures and how we can help.
That's great, so...
So, I can speak a little bit later?
No, they're going to speak with you right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's take a break till 6:00.
No, that's it.
Five-minute break. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, item number 35, resolution of necessity.
Item 35.
Oh, they're coming.
You want to wait?
There you go. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Oh, we do? Okay.
Consideration to adopt a resolution of necessity to acquire easement interests in privately-owned real property for public street and highway purposes and appurtenances for construction and maintenance of a northbound-to-eastbound right-turn pocket at College Boulevard and Plaza Drive affecting land owned by Plaza 78 LP at 3,500 College Boulevard. Make the necessary findings for the adoption of the resolution of necessity, adopt the resolution, and authorize the city attorney to file the necessary complaint with the Superior Court.
Just staff, she and I drove by the site.
Okay, staff.
Staff, and I did drive by the site several times.
Staff only.
Thank you. Mr. Edow.
Honorable Deputy Mayor, members of the city council, good evening. Douglas Edow, real estate manager, city of Oceanside. Staff is recommending adoption of the resolution as a condition to the development of the Corey Creek Project. Developer is required to do the aforementioned improvements. It's part of an agreement that was approved by the city council earlier this year. The city agreed to assist the developer in the event the developer could not voluntarily obtain the property necessary to create the right-turn pocket. The developer made an offer to the property owner, Plaza 78 LP. That was rejected. The developer then came to the city and requested our assistance pursuant to the agreement. Per the subdivision map act, a city is allowed to assist the developer when certain conditions cannot be satisfied, that are required of a tentative map. Pursuant to the agreement, the developer, presidio cornerstone, is required to pay all costs associated with the acquisition of the easement that is necessary, as well as any court costs that is incurred by the city to perform this action. Be more than happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any public?
No public.
Can I just make a quick comment before we go in there? So, the public hearing is open. If you didn't turn in a speaker slip, now's the opportunity for you to be able to come and testify. So, if anyone is here for this item, this is the resolution of necessity for item 35, now's the time to speak.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no one, Deputy Mayor, you can close the public hearing.
With this thing again? Okay, public closed. Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you, and this resolution of necessity is basically a precursor to an eminent domain, the potential for going to court, all the way to do it, eminent, to do an eminent domain. And this is actually based on the Carlsbad project that they decided to do right on the border of Oceanside, a very high-density project. It was like what's, over 600 units, and huge impacts on Oceanside in terms of traffic, in terms of roads, in terms of services. And as part of the city's involvement in this, just to be able to comment on the environmental documents, city of Oceanside actually requested that the developer make these improvements to be able to address the traffic issues. Since this is in Oceanside, then it would be Oceanside that would be making these, doing this action if there is no resolution in terms of the property owner. Obviously, the property owner was offered some money after there was a study done for the fair market value. So, while I am very, very cautious about ever voting yes to proceed with something called eminent domain, that is taking property away from a property owner by means of force, legal force, unfortunately, this is a situation where if we do not, if we're not willing to proceed in this, then there will be huge impacts to our Oceanside residents in terms of the traffic here. So, I'm going to go ahead and move adoption. Again, I think this is something that, very, very wary to do, but because of the necessity that it would, if, but for, if we don't do this, if this doesn't, hopefully, it'll, you know, it'll help resolve this in terms of the property owner and the developer, but if not, then this, I do feel that this is critical to the citizens of Oceanside and in the public's good. Thank you.
Councilmember Curran?
Second.
Well done.
Please vote.
Please vote. Thank you.
Passes four zero.